I'd like to call to order, please, the Board of Education's special meeting, review of trustee applicants for Monday, February 7th, 2022 at 5:30 PM. If everyone could please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, or anyone watching at home. And it's an exciting night, and thank you to all of the applicants for volunteering their time and treasures and being with us tonight. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into the consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Betty is not with us tonight, so I will just ask the audience if we have any student public comment? We have a potential. Any other stakeholders in our community who would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will dig into the big item of the evening, trustee candidate interviews. So what we'll do is we'll give up to 20 minutes. You should kind of guide yourself for 15 to 20 minutes. Secretary Jones will show the yellow card at three minutes, and the red card when 20 minutes is up, just to allow you to complete your thought. We thought we'd give you a couple extra minutes because we have two extra questions this year versus last when we went through this. We invited our student representative, Julian Downey, to submit a question, and Superintendent Dr. Latch.
May I interrupt President Steben? I'd like to raise a point of privilege. So the applicants are facing this way. Could I just switch seats with Julian, so he's more centrally located? I'm happy to do that.
That would be up with Julian. I did sit in his chair to make sure he had good eyesight, so it's totally up to you.
It sounds like he's ready to go. He was ready before I even finished my question.
Were you just nominated to the vice presidency of the Saline Area Schools?
Otherwise, they're straining their neck, and it's harder to see.
That's fine. You're gonna want to sit here tomorrow? No? No, I meant here, at my spot. Just so everyone knows, we do believe in being student-led in the Saline Area Schools District, so just like last year when we had our Board of Education Representative Noah Sotcha be our facilitator for our interviews, Julian Downey will complete that task for us tonight, so we thank him in advance. We'll run through a series of questions, and then we'll close and see if you have any other final thoughts, and we will move on to the next candidate. So going first is Yurun Spatell. If you can approach the podium. We have a table there, and if you can toggle the mic onto the green light, that would be fabulous. You might be more comfortable sitting down. If you prefer to stand, that's fine, too. How are you? Good. Thank you for being here. Julian, whenever you're ready.
All right, so I'm Julian, and it's evidenced right here. Well, so how are you connected to SAS? And describe your involvement with Saline Area Schools through committees and other volunteer activities.
Sure. So I have three kids. One graduated in 2020 from Saline High School, and I got a senior right now and a junior. My wife is the lead uniform volunteer for the marching band, so that ropes me into that, so I do a lot of that. So August is busy for us, and so is May, and then, you know, before each game, fittings and all that fun stuff. But that's really her thing, and I just help. Primarily for me, I've been coaching the robotics at both the middle school and the last couple of years at the high school, so the first robotics teams. So we have two middle school teams that I've been involved with for seven years, and then the high school team is actually older, and my oldest was on the high school team. But, you know, I know all those kids for years and years now, and so I help out with that. That's the primary involvement that I have with SAS.
All right. And what is your motivation for applying for this position, and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Well, I saw the email that it was open, and I'm like, you know, maybe not a bad idea. I don't know what to expect. I have absolutely no political aspirations. I do feel like, you know, community representation is important on the board. It shouldn't be just, you know, members that are staff and students of the school. And with my kids exiting, kind of like, you know, maybe that's a way to stay involved as well. And can you repeat the question, the second part of that?
What unique qualities will you bring to the board?
So when I filled out the paperwork, I guess the one thing is, in case you couldn't guess by my name, I'm not from the US originally. I've been here 34 years by now, but I attended school through ninth grade in Europe. And obviously, the education system in Europe is a bit different than it is here, and so I kind of bring that perspective to things.
Thank you. What would you want an alum of Saline Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
I want them to be proud. When they leave this school, that they always look back at that, and that all 12 years or all 15 years, if you can, K through 12, you know, that they're proud of that. And there wasn't, you know, moments that it really like, I wish that hadn't happened and things like that. And so whatever we can do to make this a positive experience for the entire time in the school, I think is critical.
Discuss the business side of governing a school district, and what are your experiences with budgeting policy and working as a part of a collaborative team?
So I guess a big thing for me is to stay within budget or on the budget, you know, at least in my career, that has always been critical. Of course, I haven't worked for a public school. And I think financially, being responsible and planning and not having to keep going back to voters every time, say, hey, we need a new millage, we need new money, you know, because we haven't planned for X or Y. You really should, you know, have a big, always have the big picture in mind. And I have seen some things in previous millages that I just didn't agree with, you know, so I would like to, you know, see that improve.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation and develop a plan that led to future success.
Pretty much everybody's competition we go to, but no. So, you know, again, if you look at the bigger picture, you know, what is the immediate win? Is that important? Or are we in this for the long haul? And so that's the kind of, you know, approach I take to most things, my job, the robotics club, you know, all those things.
All right. And how will you react to people wanting to ban books or media or such things, which seems to be a trend around the country?
You know, if you don't want to read a book, don't read it. I think everyone should be able to make that choice for themselves. Maybe a label on there, just like we have, you know, mature content, explicit content on media. Sure, put it on there, you know, give people the choice. Send out the email to the parent and says, hey, we're gonna read this book in class. If you're not okay with that, you can opt out and read something else. I don't think as, you know, any one person or any one body should say, you can't read this. That's just not right. Yes?
Sorry about that. Yurun, Superintendent Board of Education trustee relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
I'm open to any dialogue, anytime you, you know, there needs to be a dialogue, and I'm willing to, you know, entertain any viewpoint on, you know, whatever the issue may be. Outside of that, I mean, you know, I guess I can always be available.
Thank you.
You went through that pretty fast.
I don't know what to expect. I've never done this.
No, that's okay. I just, those were the questions that we had, so if we can just take a minute to pause, and if you can reflect on anything else that you might like us to know as we're considering your application.
Not really. I just wanted to throw my name in the hat, and, you know, it's completely up to you guys on how you want to form the board and what you want to have as representation of the board. And, you know, I'm gonna be happy either way. So I'm not, you know, I'm just here.
All right, Yurun, thank you so much. We appreciate your time and your interest.
Turned off.
All right, thanks very much. You are welcome to stay or welcome to go, whatever. Oh, my goodness. Well, happy birthday to her. Moving on to interview number two, please, Casey Rule. Casey, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Never know. It's okay to correct us. All right, so I think you just saw kind of the procedure here. So Julian, whenever you're ready.
All right. Well, to begin, how are you connected to Saline Area Schools? And can you describe your involvement with Saline Area Schools through committees and other volunteer activities?
So my son is actually a student here in this school district. He's actually part of the specials program. And then throughout the years, I've been involved in various PTA classroom activities and helping support the teachers and staff.
Can you hear me now?
We can. You might, I don't know if the feed would have gotten that at home. Do you mind repeating what you just said?
Sure. So I'm connected by my son, who is in the school district as part of the classroom and also part of the specials program through the school. And then my connection to the school district is I've been part of the PTA and classroom activities throughout his career here so far.
All right. And what is your motivation for applying for this position, and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Sure. So I wanted to get involved in either some part of the community that I live in, and I figured the best way to do that was in this area. I don't have a ton of time to do, say, like, 40 hours a week in, like, government, but I figured the most bang for my buck would be helping everyone here. What unique qualification is my entire career has been through IT and health, so currently what I do now is I work taking requests from people and turning those into actionable items for other teams, so I have figured that might help out a little bit.
All right. And what would you want an alum of Saline Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
That they were on the possible best course for their future, that there was, nothing was left on the table. We did the best we could for anyone that walked through those doors.
All right. And can you discuss the business side of governing a school district? And what are your experiences with budgeting policy and working as a part of a collaborative team?
Sure. The business aspect of a school district, I'm not entirely dialed in on that. I know we get a certain budget, and we gotta work within that budget for the items that we need to do. In terms of the second part, I've been on multiple teams where we've had to break down big problems into small chunks and then do the best for those stakeholders. Some of them I'm not allowed to talk about, but some, for instance, bigger projects involving other big school districts. That's about all I can say, and getting all of their people tested on a daily basis and getting those results out as fast as possible.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation and develop a plan that led to future success.
Sure. So in one of the healthcare industries that I worked at, we had a bigger problem with things not going out in timely manner. So what my team did is we all came together, met with stakeholders, got the bigger problems, and then decided that we needed to turn this into more of a smaller chunked message system. And so what my team did is went to our developers, helped them develop that software to push those notifications faster to the teams to get things done.
And how will you react to people wanting to ban books and media, which, again, seems to be a trend around the country?
Yeah. That, just like the last applicant said, it's, we as a group have a decision to make, and a lot of educators have already made those decisions. Whether these are new items that are hot-button issues, you know, I think it's our job to kind of temper those expectations where we can and then address them where they should be.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Superintendent Board of Education trustee relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
Sure. So a big part, I think, of any strong team is communication, whether people prefer email or text or meetings. I'm a big fan of it should be an email and not a meeting, but I think that's kind of everyone. As long as you have an open exchange of ideas in any format, I feel like you're setting yourself up for success.
Those are the only questions that we had, so I just want to, you have plenty of time if you'd like to complete any thoughts or tell us anything that you haven't mentioned already while we consider your application.
No, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Casey, thank you so much. Casey's son, thank you for coming. It's excellent to model, model the behavior there. I know we all like our kids watching us once in a while, seeing that volunteerism. What's that? Oh, well, you know. We are welcome back. We get excited when kids come, so. And again, you're welcome to stay or exit, whatever you choose. Applicant number three, Kristin Hoffman-Piebler. Did you bring any children? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I am kidding. You kind of saw the procedure, just make sure to toggle on the mic, and Julian, whenever you're ready.
All right. So how are you connected to Saline Area Schools? And describe your involvement with Saline Area Schools through committees or volunteer activities.
Yeah, so we've all met before in various capacities. I'm Kristin Hoffman-Piebler. I am a parent in the district, and I am a current CAB member, as well as a longtime parent volunteer, book fair chair, what else? Classroom volunteer. And before you go on with your questions, I have a quick statement that I would like to read, and then we can go from there. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again tonight. A year ago, when I interviewed for the previous school board vacancy, I was so pleased to be here with all of you in our shared passion for Saline Area Schools. I was equally pleased to see trustee Jones appointed to the board at that time. So I was really surprised to learn that there would be another vacancy available and another opportunity to apply for the board. At the beginning of my prep for this application, I asked whether substitute teachers could concurrently work and sit as a trustee of the Board of Education. The response that I received was, no, but feel free to do your own research. And those are magic words for me. I am the queen of the deep dive. My husband makes tons of fun of me all the time for that, and so I started Googling, and I found an MLive article from 2009 that said that this is not the first time that this particular school district has asked this question. And in 2009, subs were hired directly by Saline Area Schools and not through the personnel hiring firm Edgestaff, which did not actually exist until 2010. So this all led me down the rabbit hole of reading Michigan law, having conversations with Edgestaff's human resources, and ended with a query to and an email response from the Attorney General's Office, which turns out, you can't ask them questions as a general citizen. I learned that, so now I can have that for my hip pocket for later on in life. Based on my research and the changes in the hiring practices in our district, I do believe there is room to reexamine the issue of office compatibility, but that is for a future time. For now, this board must and should rely on the laws and policies as they read today. My goal has always been to serve my chosen home of Saline, specifically to be of service to the school district my children attend. Throughout my time in many district volunteer roles, I've seen firsthand the magic within this district, from students to teachers, administration and staff. And at the beginning of the school year, I became an employee of Edgestaff in order to help relieve some of the burden of the substitute teacher shortage for teachers in our district. And during my short tenure as a guest teacher, I have accepted the request to cover an FMLA leave until the end of the school year for a teacher in a specialty role. My training as a professional musician helps me, put me in the unique position of being able to help teach the curriculum and have it continue without pause for the remainder of the school year when the teacher can't be there. I've had a lot of community members ask me, why don't you just give up subbing? What's the big deal? Well, my commitment is and has always been to the students and the teachers of this district, and while I believe I have the skills and qualities that would be of good service to the Board of Education, I have made a commitment to one of our brilliant music educators, and I have promised to be there to help continue the work that she does when she can't be there. And at this time, honoring my promise to those students, like Eli back there, and their teacher is the best way and the right way to serve our students and this district. For this reason, I respectfully withdraw my name from consideration for the appointment of trustee to the Board of Education at this time, and I hope that this issue of subs as trustee will be reexamined as operating procedures have changed in the last 12 years in our district and in districts around the state. Thank you for your time being here tonight and for your continued and ongoing commitment to our students, our staff, and our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristin. I'm gonna assume then we won't move forward with the questions. I just wanted to let, first, so first of all, thank you for subbing, and anyone who's interested in subbing in Saline Area Schools, I'm gonna put in a plug. We would love to have you.
It's super great.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted to let you know that we did receive an email reply. I did share that with the board as requested and did participate in follow-up at your request and via the forwarded email from trustee Jones. So if it's okay, I will email you and follow up and copy our board, just so you have some of that information as you continue to do research.
I do love a good deep dive. I will say that I know that this board is not lawmakers for the state of Michigan, and I know that your hands are tied as far as Michigan law is concerned, and when I say that there's room to reexamine, I don't necessarily mean this body can do that work. I think it is a state-of-Michigan thing that is worth asking and worth investigating because there is a huge shortage and there's a lot of service to go around, and I think it would be a good thing for the state of Michigan to do. But anyway, appreciate your time tonight and really looking forward to your continued good work. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are moving on then to our fourth interview, Louis Barnett. Hi there, how are you? Good. Would you prefer to sit or would you prefer to stand? Totally up to you. Okay, no problem. You are in charge. If you can make sure that the green light is on, Julian, whenever you're ready.
All right. How are you connected to Saline Area Schools? And describe your involvement with Saline Area Schools through committees or other volunteer activities.
First of all, thank you, Julian and Board, for giving me this opportunity. To answer your question, back in 2019, our family moved into the Saline District. We were currently going to Lincoln Consolidated, and our daughter was a senior, so it made sense to have her finish there. And she took one of the classes here with a consortium broadcasting class, and that helped her a lot in terms of going to Central and just giving her some of exposure. So I was really impressed that all these schools came together and created these hubs for different programs in different schools. So that was the first eye-opening thing, that it's like, this was awesome. And from there, our son was in the middle school, and he went to the middle school here, and he was doing great, and we got to a point where I wanted to be more involved now that our daughter had graduated and I had a little more time. I mean, I had previously volunteered to do different things at Lincoln. I helped at a reconfiguration committee. I acted as a coach for some teams, and I just didn't have, it just wasn't the time, but I've gotten to the point where I'd like to be able to give back to the community. And in terms of involvement, I've attended several board meetings and tried to provide some feedback to the board and constructive, I would say, and, yeah, I just want to see the school districts excel. Because, I mean, yes, I have some skin in the game with my son, and I want every kid to be able to excel here.
All right. What is your motivation for applying for this position, and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Now, in terms of motivation, like the first candidate, I wasn't born here. I came here to the States from Mexico when I was four, and I had some challenges, but at the same time, there was a lot of opportunity here, and ended up going to U of M, met my wife here, and along the way to here, yes, I mean, I experienced some discrimination, but I would say for the most part, this country's awesome, and there's more good than bad, and that's my motivation, being here, to just kind of keep pushing that. Now, in terms of unique qualities, analytical thinker, problem solver, working at the university, I've had to deal with coming up with solutions and collaborating with team members, and so I have that to bring to the table. One other thing that I would say as well, my IT background could be beneficial as well. And, yes.
What would you want an alum of Saline Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
I would want alum to feel that this was their launchpad. I wouldn't want them to feel like, oh, that was the best times of my life, because, I mean, your life is just starting. So I want to give, I would want them to feel that, yes, I mean, this catapulted them to where they would go, and for that, I mean, I would want to make sure that they feel safe, that they have all the educational opportunities as well as emotionally growing, and just exploring their imagination and their creativity to see where that will lead them.
Discuss the business side of governing a school district, and what experience, what are your experiences with budgeting, policy, and working as a part of a collaborative team?
I mentioned that back in 2012, I worked as part of a community collaboration or committee to help reconfigure the Lincoln School District. I mean, at the time, they weren't being, financially, they were having issues, and I was part of a committee that looked for solutions. The end solution was that one of the schools had to be shut down, two others consolidated, and there was a lot of tough decisions. There was no winners, and it was just a tough time, but the end result was that Lincoln was, after a year or two, they were back in financially stable. So that's my part in terms of the budget. Now, in the other part, can you repeat that other part, sorry?
Yeah, so what are your experiences with budgeting, policy, and working as a part of a collaborative team?
In regards to the policy, working at the University of Michigan, I was, for two years, part of the Voices of the Staff, which is a... organization for the employees to improve engagement and satisfaction. And what's interesting about that group is they will take employees from, they'll take a doctor, they'll take they'll just take employees from from top to bottom and just put them in a room and have them come up with ideas. And this was a very good experience, taught me a lot to work with people and so I would say that that was very helpful and I've also worked on committees as well as I previously mentioned with the reconfiguration. I mean, working with people and just coming up with ideas. Where you have to compromise and come to an agreement.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation to develop a plan that led to future success.
One example that I can give is my workplace. We had a electronic patient record system that was phased out. The company had been bought out and we had to move to a different vendor and I helped in evaluating different products. So we had to look at the long term, the sustainability and the supportability. So we had to look at different facets of it. And make sure that it would have a long term and would be sustainable and maintained. I'd also like to say that at times, we also have to have a tactical plan for situations that might not be able to be dealt in a more long term plan. So, so having both strategies can complement each other.
How will you react to people wanting to ban books and media, which again seems to be a trend across the country?
I would say that I would be a voice and as the board, we would come to agreement and like somebody had mentioned, there's some hot topic items and some of the books might be questionable whether somebody agrees or not. So once again, I mean, it would have to be an agreement amongst the board. But yeah, I mean, I would just be one voice and I wouldn't know what to say, what book. So I don't know what where my stand would be, but I mean, I would think. And I guess I would go further and I would say like if it was controversial, then maybe we would have to think outside the box and and have something in place with the community to compromise and reach a goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Superintendent Board of Education trustee, relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
Going back to being part of Voices of the Staff, it's critical to be able to work together because I mean, the end goal is the children in this district doing well. So it would be in my best interest to work with everyone on the board, including the superintendent, to make sure things are the best for the children.
Thank you. Is it Louise?
Yes.
I mispronounced it wrong. I apologize for earlier.
No problem.
Is there anything, you have time, so the floor is yours. Is there anything else that you would like to say, tell us or communicate while we consider your application?
The only thing that I would say is that I know there's coming here to the United States, I mean, I've, I've experienced just a wonderful experience just with the different people and there are so many differences amongst us, but I truly feel that in this country, those differences make us stronger. And if we can just come together. It would just be amazing and so yes, I'll leave it with that and thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on. To candidate number five, Jason Tizidis. Did I, I probably really mispronounced that. How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Tizidis.
Tizidis, okay. All right. Thank you so much. If you can just make sure that's toggled to the green light, welcome and Julian, whenever you're ready.
How are you connected to Celine area schools and describe your involvement with Celine area schools through committees and other volunteer activities?
Absolutely. First, thank you, everyone on the board for having the special meeting tonight. It is. So I'm connected to Celine schools back when my wife and I got married. We lived in the Lincoln School District. And we began planning at that time and saving and sacrificing to move to the Celine School District. We knew that we wanted our kids to be in the Celine School District. We believe strongly in school of choice, but we wanted to be part of the community as well. So we saved and in 2015, we moved here to Celine School District in order to get our kids ready to attend school. Other volunteer and connections that I have with the school outside of, you know, when my girls were in school and we were room parents or volunteering to coach rec soccer and things like that. That's my connection to the community.
And do you have any involvement through committees or other volunteer activities?
Uh, no.
Okay. What is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
I have three motivations for putting my hat in the ring on this one. The first one, everybody that told me not to do it. I, if you talk to anybody, they will tell you that you can't tell me not to do something. They'll just encourage me to do it more. My father-in-law served in the Lincoln Consolidated School District on the Board of Education. When I told him last night that I was interviewing tonight, he said, why the heck would you want to do that? It is the most thankless job that you can have. Why would you do that? So that's one of my motivations. Another one of my motivations is when my oldest daughter started here in the school district. We were, we had moved in and she had taken the placement tests for either pre-K or young fives or kindergarten. And she had scored off the charts. She scored extraordinarily high and we wanted to move her into kindergarten. The principal at the time really discouraged that. And to the point that had made the insinuation that if our daughter had struggled, the school wasn't going to be there to help her because the school was telling us that she really needed to be in young fives. And that if she couldn't read at age level, that she was going to have to be held back and that would be detrimental. And that really kind of hit us. We had other education professionals look at her placement tests and they didn't know why the principal would say that. But we went along with what the school said because we trusted that the school was making the right decision for her daughter. I am happy to say that she's in third grade now and reads at a sixth and seventh grade level. So much so that she has a special curriculum for reading. So I don't think that she would have been sacrificed or held back at all if we had moved her up to kindergarten like we had wanted to. But that's one of my motivations is we felt that my daughter was treated as a number and not as an individual student. My third motivation is safety. I work in the private public safety sector. A lot of people don't realize that there's private companies that handle a lot of the job that courts and probation offices don't want to do. So my experience is in public safety. While my daughter was in Celine schools, she was bullied pretty badly. To the point where there was a very public bullying incident that actually involved a parent. When we addressed it with the school, the school wanted us to see the other side of it and wanted to see the parents' side of it. The bullying incident was so bad that a girl standing next to my daughter actually wet herself. So when we were pressed in that situation and the principal had wanted us to see the other side of it. Once again, my daughter became a number and not a student. So those are my three motivations. Sorry to be a downer on that one, everyone. But those are my three motivations. The qualities, I believe, or the actual? Sorry, I'm referring to all my notes. If I don't take notes, I'll forget everything. I have the memory of a carnival goldfish, so I apologize for that. I'm very data driven. I am a data junkie. The first five years of my career, I spent as a data analyst analyzing all kinds of data. Would anybody mind if I removed the mask? Or is that okay? My glasses are either going to fog or I'm going to continue to adjust my mask. I apologize. I'm a data junkie. I love data. I love making database decisions. I teach evidence-based practices to a number of government entities around the Midwest. And I think that is a very important quality because in education, evidence-based practices and evidence-based decision-making is at the core of what we do in education. I also have a great deal of experience in government procurement and RFP processes. And the entire procurement process through the government system. I've been doing that for a decade and a half and I'm very familiar with that. I do currently sit on two corporate boards, one based out of Ann Arbor, one based out of Royal Oak. It's not a nonprofit, it's not a school board, but they are two corporate boards that I sit on. And as I mentioned earlier, I do work in the public safety sector. So I'm very familiar with what we have to do as far as securing our schools and making our schools safe for everybody.
What would you want an alum of Celine area schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
I would say opportunity. One of the main reasons we moved to the Celine School District were the opportunities that students have in the schools. They are unrivaled, second to none. We have an equestrian team, a bass fishing team, broadcast journalism. We have everything in the Celine School District. I would want the students leaving to know that they had opportunity, whether they took advantage of it or not. They had an opportunity to participate in some of the greatest programs that I think are available in Southeast Michigan.
Discuss the business side of governing a school district and what are your experiences with budgeting, policy and working as a part of a collaborative team?
So obviously I've never been on a school board, but being part of two corporate boards, there is a lot to do with budgeting and policy and working with investors and things like that. The school district is not a for-profit company. It's not a nonprofit company. Budgeting wise, I deal with multimillion dollar budgets all the time in my current roles. I currently serve as the vice president of one company and the CEO of another. I am very familiar with working with the board and investors. So making sure that we are in line with budgetary needs and things like that is very, very important. One of the companies I work for does receive government grant funding. That's a whole other layer, as you guys know, when you receive money from the government, there's a great deal of checks and balances that have to go on, very familiar with that. Including things like ethics boards, IRBs and things like that, you have to make sure that are are constantly in place. That brings me into the policy part. So obviously I'm very familiar and responsible for writing a great deal of policy as far as corporate policy goes. So writing bylaws, policy and procedure. I work with a number of government entities to write policy and procedures for them as it pertains to the public safety sector. So I'm very familiar with that. As far as collaboration goes, obviously when you're on a board, it is a collaborative body. So you're already collaborating and I like to look at that as second nature. I also look at it from a perspective, when I'm leading, I like to lead from behind. I like to see the discussion come out. I like to see and hear other arguments. And what I always say is that if I can't make your argument better than you can, then I don't know your argument well enough. And that's what I really live by as far as collaboration goes.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation to develop a plan that led to future success.
So I didn't hear everybody's answer, but I'm going to jump right into the COVID bandwagon since that's been the hot topic for the last two years. Working in the public safety sector and as everybody knows, a lot of things are made overseas in other countries. Believe it or not, at the beginning of December 2019, I read an obscure article that talked about a SARS-like virus that had popped up in China. And I made a comment to my wife, which I think she's listening right now, so she's probably rolling her eyes. But I made a comment to my wife that you watch, this is going to blow up. And once we got closer to January and we started seeing things change from a political climate and a cultural climate when it came to COVID. I immediately charged my company with spending tens of thousands of dollars to secure supplies that we knew were going to come from overseas. Including PPE, drug testing supplies and other electronic goods that we knew we were going to need. As part of that, one of my companies also creates a software platform that is used by courts around the country. We immediately started contacting all of our courts and let them know that once they were going to have to start going remote, as we all knew we had to in March of 2020. We actually offered our software platform free to courts and agencies around the country so that they could stay in contact with the people that were in their programs. Keeping constant communication with people in in rehabilitative programs is key, just like in in education. Having constant communication with our students was key. So we made those strategic plans and we were able to secure enough supplies of various items to even bring on new customers, new government contracts during the time when governments couldn't even find supplies. So I think by spending those tens of thousands of dollars upfront, it was hedging our bet a little bit, but I think that was a a pretty good strategic move.
How will you react to people wanting to ban books and media, which seems to be a trend?
So I heard that question when I was sitting down and it was an interesting one. I consider myself a purist when it comes to free speech and that includes the written word. We either stand for all speech or we stand for no speech. Now, that being said, there is subject matter that I think we all agree is not suitable for a five-year-old or not suitable for a 10-year-old or or, you know, a 43-year-old like myself. But I think that is important to look at it from a perspective that the school district by its nature has age-appropriate programming. We don't teach a second grader Algebra II. For the same token, we would not present books to a second grader that is made for a high school that can appreciate the particular content. So quite simply, I am not for banning written books. I'm not for banning or censoring media. What I am for is I am for the school district in partnership with the parents, making the right decisions of what our students are exposed to.
Thank you very much.
All right, Jason. Superintendent Board of Education trustee, relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
So not unlike a board of directors and a CEO, there has to be constant communication and open lines of communication when it comes to that. I'm not sure what the rules are for ex parte communication between the board and and the superintendent or other administration. But it would seem to me that it would or other administration, but it would seem to me that it would behoove everybody if there was an open line of communication that isn't always in the public eye. And I know that I have some friends that are watching and hearing me say that right now, and they're probably rolling their eyes too. But I think it is important to have those open lines of communication, and from time to time, there are pieces of communication that are a little bit more sensitive and need to be addressed. Not that there shouldn't be transparency, but there definitely should be open lines of communication when there are difficult decisions to be made. All those decisions are always going to be brought to light eventually, but I think that it behooves everybody to be able to stick their neck out and be able to make the right call and have those right discussions if they're done in an open environment within the group and then transparently communicate with the community.
All right, Jason, that's it from us. So just, again, wanted to give you the opportunity if there's anything that you hadn't previously touched on or that you'd specifically like us to take away as we consider all of the applications.
There is one thing, and this could sink my chances of being part of the board, but I think it's important to hear it. Right now, my daughters do not attend Celine area schools. We pulled them. Our primary reason for pulling them was our fear of not being able to have in-person instruction, and there was also some other reasons I had mentioned earlier. But one of the things that I kind of remember when COVID hit, and it was a challenge for everybody, it doesn't matter what school district it was, it was a challenge for everybody. But I remember, there was a couple of members of the board that during one of the board meetings had like kind of an open-ended question of why we saw an enrollment drop at Celine area schools, and there's a number of reasons why. But one of those things I looked at was the school community that we're a part of now, several people from Celine area schools went over to that school community. And my wife is very involved there, just like she was very involved in the Celine area schools. And during a fundraiser, my wife kind of chaired that committee, and there was six other parents on that committee, all of which live in Celine area schools, five of which left Celine area schools for similar reasons to us. And I kind of take that as a gut check to me as part of the community because those parents that left Celine area schools and went to another school participate. They give of their time. They sacrifice for their kids. And sometimes, I think that it is lost on the school district that some of those parents, for lack of a better term, were chased from the school district. And we want nothing more than to be a part of this community. We absolutely bought a house that we couldn't afford at the time, and we looked like the Clampetts moving in with the big open box trucks and moving in, but we want to be a part of this community, we want to be a part of the school district. And I think there's a lot of parents that want to be more active and feel sometimes that they can't be as active as they want to be. So like I mentioned, that might sink my chances, but I think it's very important to be honest with everybody that I am in the Celine School District. We did pull our children from Celine area schools, and we want desperately to be able to trust Celine area schools to come back and be a part of the community.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Moving to our sixth applicant, Ryan Davidson. Jenny, I can't see if there's anybody back there. Is there anybody back there?
I can't see anyone.
Yeah, Jenny, with that, we'll just make sure that Mr. Davidson isn't in the hallway, and hopefully he doesn't believe that he could do this remotely. Oh, thank you, Candace. We're just going to pause for a minute.
He sent a message to confirm. He just said, you know, "Thank you, looking forward to the opportunity."
We are running early. I know we had said roughly 15 to 20 minutes, and we did get off to a good start. Would it be okay, David, if we went with you next? Okay? And we'll see if Mr. Davidson comes by the end of David's time. So again, you probably have seen the procedure, if you can just make sure the green light's on, so our friends at home can hear you, and whenever you're ready. Actually, Julian, whenever you're ready.
How are you connected to Celine area schools? And describe your involvement with Celine area schools through committees or other volunteer activities.
Sure. Thanks, everybody, for your time. I think everybody here has met me before. I have two children currently in the Celine area school district. I have a 10th grader and a 1st grader at Harvest. In terms of my involvement with the schools for the last couple of years, I've been heavily involved with advocacy for special needs populations, for students of color, for LGBTQIA students with various community groups, and seen me a lot in that capacity at this meeting.
What is your motivation for applying for this position, and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Sure. So in terms of motivation, I've talked before in front of this body about some of my motivation for being such a strong advocate in our schools, and that goes back to my own personal history and to my own kids now. But the number one thing that motivates me is that as someone who went through a school career as an LGBTQ youth who did not always have a great experience in our schools, I want to be able to be the kind of advocate that was never in the room for me when I was growing up. And that's especially become important to me now that my own child has come out as non-binary. That's my biggest motivation. I'm also motivated, of course, by the desire to be a good part of the community and someone who's making a collaborative effort to make our community a better place and not just sitting around and complaining about it.
What would you want an alum of Celine area schools to remember about their education and experience within the district?
The number one thing is, of course, empowerment, empowerment, empowerment preparation. I want every student to come away feeling that they've been supported by their school system and that they are empowered to move forward in the world, taking those experiences with them to become a productive part of their community and advocate for themselves and for other people in their communities. I want them to feel prepared academically to enter the workforce, to enter society, and to become good citizens.
Discuss the business side of governing a school district, and what are your experiences with budgeting, policy, and working as a part of a collaborative team?
Yeah, thank you. And I actually neglected to flag up my experiences earlier when that was a part of the question, so I'll kind of incorporate that at this point. But talking about budgeting and finances, I've been involved, talking about my professional background, I'm a researcher, and I've been involved since the beginning of my career, which is, I guess, at this point, been 15 or 20 years, with budgeting, administrating budgets, and in certain capacities, reviewing budgets for various publicly and privately-funded research projects with budgets ranging from up to maybe 10 or 12 million dollars. So that's, you can look at my CV, which I forwarded to all of you on the board, but I've been involved in a few dozen projects of that scale. These are all projects in the public sphere, so these are analogous in a certain sense to education budgets, although obviously there are going to be differences. But this is, you know, talking about writing grants to obtain public funds or private funds, administering those grants, and serving as a reviewer for both public and private entities, reviewing other people's budgets to confirm whether those are within the kind of parameters defined by the funder. So, talking about policy and things of that nature, another part of my professional career is that I sit, I currently work at Ascension St. John Hospital in Detroit. I sit on several boards at the hospital, including our institutional review board, our daily safety monitoring board, our research leadership board. And in those capacities, what we're really doing on all of those boards is taking different streams of often conflicting law and policy and implementing those at the local level. So we're taking FDA policy, broader federal government policy, institutional policy. We have a nested institutional structure so that we have a national governing kind of entity and a local hospital entity. So we have four different kinds of hierarchical sets of law and policy that we look at implementing at the local level in terms of making sure that our research projects are in compliance with the laws and with the kind of ethical standards that we want to hold them to, and making sure that our employees are fulfilling the requirements that they would be required to in terms of conflict of interest and other kinds of fiduciary capacities. So certainly, I'm very strongly involved in policy implementation on that level. We also have certain responsibilities for developing hospital-level policy. I'm sorry, was there a third part of my question?
The third part was working as a part of a collaborative team.
Sure. So, of course, as I mentioned, those are some of the governing boards that I'm a part of. I'm also, I currently sit on the editorial boards for three different scientific journals. Those are all bodies in which collaborative work is, of course, necessary to further the goals of those institutions.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation to develop a plan that led to future success.
So I think the first thing that comes to mind is I was hired in my current role at Ascension St. John Hospital to run our research program in traumatic injury. And the reason that I was brought on board to do that was because at the time, this was in 2016, our institution was what's known as a Level 2 trauma center and was aspiring to become a Level 1 trauma center, that is a higher level of trauma care, as you can imagine. One of the areas that the institution was deficient at that time was in terms of research. We really weren't producing much original research, so they brought me on board to take control of that effort. We work on a three-year review cycle at the hospital for that particular type of certification. I was brought in with only a year and a half left in our then-current certification cycle. So my first steps were to try and come up with a way to not only produce in the short term, but to create a productive program in the long run that would sustain, would both get us there quickly and sustain us over the long term. I'm happy to say that not only were we able to meet our goals for that first review cycle, but in our most recently concluded review cycle, our research program was actually judged to be our greatest area of strength. So I was proud to be able to have taken it from something that was our biggest deficit to our biggest area of strength in about five years.
All right. And how will you react to people wanting to ban books and media?
Well, I'm opposed to censorship. I'm opposed to censorship in any form. That being said, I do have a background in developmental psychology. My PhD is in social psychology, so I understand that there are, when we're talking about a school district, we're talking about constituents or children who are at various levels of psychological development, so we do need to be cognizant of what's age-appropriate just for the cognitive level of development of different kids. But I think that's something that we can almost always rely on our educators to make a good judgment about and not something that we need to worry about as community members or as board members.
So Superintendent Board of Education trustee relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
Sure, that's a great question. So, obviously, when people in different roles have very different roles to play with respect to their relationships with different leaders and different people and different modes of operation. So, the relationship that it's appropriate to have as an advocate or a community member or as a parent is not the one that's necessarily appropriate to have as a member of a governing board. As a member of a governing board wearing that hat, one always has to be cognizant of openness, good communication, and above all, collaboration, because everyone sitting in this room is on the same side of the table in terms of fostering the best things for the district, and especially ultimately, what everybody is here for is for the students.
All right. Those are all the questions we had, but obviously you have more time, so please complete any thoughts, or if there's a topic that hasn't come up and you'd like to address that and share that with us, please feel free.
Thank you all for your time very much. I appreciate having the opportunity to be here, Ken.
All right, David, thank you. Candace, should we check the email one more time? Okay. Oh, Ben, thank you. Just, you never know, was there an accident? Was there something that actually did happen on the way to a board meeting once, believe it or not, so... We do not want that. All right, I'm going to go back. Hi, Ryan?
Yes.
Hi, come on in.
Sorry for the delay.
No worries. You can stand or sit if you're more comfortable, do whatever you would like, and I'm just going to go to your application, Ken. How are you?
Good.
Good. So just to kind of give you the lay of the land here, so this is Julian Downey. He is our Board of Education representative from our student body. He's a senior at Celine High School. So he is our interviewer tonight. So the board has created a list of questions. Julian created one of his own, and Dr. Latch created one of his own as well, so we'll go through those. And we give you up to 20 minutes. This is Secretary Jones. If she shows the yellow card, that means you have three minutes left, and if she shows you the red card, that means 20 minutes is up, so if you could complete your thought, just to be equitable, to give everybody the same amount of time.
Yes, ma'am.
So, oh, and if you can make sure the green light is toggled on, perfect. Okay. Julian, whenever you're ready.
Hello, I'm Julian. I'm a senior at Celine High School. And well, to begin, how are you connected to Celine area schools? And describe your involvement with Celine area schools through committees or other volunteer activities.
So full disclosure, my wife and I and our family moved here in October. We previously lived in Mylan. Well, we were in Mylan for seven or eight years. I was transferred to Washington DC for work and we knew before we even left that we were coming back to Selen. I'm allowed to live within fifty miles from the metro Detroit area and we knew before we left, before we even came back, that we were coming back to Selen. So that's, this is where I want my children to be raised. This is the, the environment I want them to be in. So that's why we chose this city over every city that we had. We, we could have lived anywhere we wanted to, so we chose Selen. Before the school year even started, our house wasn't finished. We were living up north and we made the decision that through the school board, sorry, the superintendent's office, we, we called and asked, our children are gonna have to either go to school up in Marysville or can we commute them down to Selen? And we, they said we could do that. So I drove five days a week, five hours plus round trip to get the kids to school, every morning go to work and then pick them up and go home. And then two weeks in a hotel in Arbor to finish that up. So since I've been here, I've, our children are in sports already. I coach or help out coaching with direct league basketball. It's the first thing I could get my, really get my, my teeth into quickly, so that's, that's what I'm doing. So besides that, I haven't got a chance to do much beyond that, but this is why I'm, I'm here, because I want to be involved in every aspect of my community.
What is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
I'm, I'm, full disclosure, I don't have an educational background. My background is strictly in law enforcement. I will, I will not make any qualms about that whatsoever. So I'm, I'm probably the atypical candidate for a school board position because of not having a strong educational background, but I've seen the highest levels of government at work and I've seen all the way to the, to the streets of third world countries. So I know that I want my children and every child that I can come in contact with to be better than they are now. I want when someone leaves school and goes off to their next step, to be their best version of themselves. And I think that's very important and I think it's something that we overlook a lot. Everything that goes on in the world on a daily basis, the twenty-four hour news cycle, the constant barrage of negativity, I think it, it's lost and our kids nowadays are, are bearing the brunt of that. And I think my law enforcement and security knowledge that I had from my previous job makes me a candidate to help out in a lot of areas in the school district.
So what would you want an alum of Selen area schools to remember about their education and experience within the district?
I want them to look back fondly. I mean, I look back twenty-some years past my graduation date and it's still some of the best friends I had, best memories, teachers, I still, I meet the teachers. I met a teacher a couple of years back that I had in my senior year all throughout high school. I went to a very small town, so I had him multiple times throughout the course of my four years there and I still call him, you know, Mr. Lasecki. And he's like, oh, you can call me George. And I'm like, no, you will always be Mr. Lasecki to me. Because that is very important to me that, you know, you still have the respect and, but you're still, it's so fond and I'm so, respect that gentleman so much to this day that, you know, that I still call him by his full name, even though like we're, we're not equals, we'll never be equals because he, he took this little ball of clay and molded them to the person that he is. So I, I want them to look back and say, you know what, this was, this was good. I don't, you know, it could have been better, sure, I could have done some things better, but this was really good and now let's, what's next? Let's get, let's get to the next thing.
Discuss the business side of governing a school district and what are your experiences with budgeting, policy, and working as a part of a collaborative team?
Budgeting, I, I do have a master's degree in public administration. A lot of emphasis was focused on budgeting in that from academic standpoint. I started at Eastern, I had to finish up online due to work. So my, I do have a small educational background when it comes to that budgeting. I was in charge of, I was a resident agent in charge of the vice president for residents in Washington DC. So therefore I was sole cardholder purchasing agent for anything the vice president residents may need at the time. And when you get to that level of government, there's like thirty-seven thousand red tapes and hurdles you have to jump through. So when it comes to policies, I've written policy for, for my agency. My new current agency that I work for now, I haven't written a policy there, but it's because I've only been there for eight months. And working as a collaborative team, I mean, I've always, from sports in high school to the military, to law enforcement, to Secret Service, to now the postal inspection service, like we're all part of a team. Everybody's on a team, whether you want to believe it or not. We're all in the team of, the earth is a giant ball, so we're all on that team to start with. So I've worked with teams to the nth degree that I can't even begin to describe in any kind of specific detail.
Describe a time when you demonstrated the ability to think strategically and look beyond the present situation to develop a plan that led to future success.
Small example, I was, phone rang one Thursday afternoon, might have been Wednesday or Thursday. Hey, you need to get to Andrews Air Force Base in four hours. The vice president's going to Turkey tomorrow to negotiate a peace treaty with the Turkish Prime Minister. Landed at noon that day. Was given one minute to look at the, the place that I was allowed to look at because certain countries don't work very well with, with us in the United States. The vice president landed at noon the next day and we were able to successfully complete the mission without any casualties. It's very hard as, as a federal agent, as a member of that team to think about, we, we're not used to getting told no. So when someone has to tell you no, when you're in someone else's backyard, someone else's country and it's their rules, it, it's hard to look past it. Like, no, I, I need to do this. I'm securing the second most powerful person in our infrastructure, in a hierarchy of government for the United States, like, and you're telling me, no, I can't do this. Or you're giving me five minutes. So you have to just trust in your team, trust in the decisions you're making with very limited time and just make sure you stay on the path.
How will you react to people wanting to ban books and media, which is a trend that we are beginning to see throughout the country?
I don't think you can ban books or media because it's, it's out there. With the internet, everything's forever. If, if, if it's said, if it's spoken, read, written, it's permanent. So I do believe that as adults, parents, educators, children even, young adults, like we, we have a say in the matter. We should steer our children in certain directions. I don't want, you know, my kids don't watch certain movies yet and my oldest is only eleven. I'm not letting him watch R-rated movies. I mean, that's just, that's common sense to the most part. I have realized over the years that some people have more or less common sense, but I don't think you can ban anything. You should just, just as a group, you work together, find appropriate material and you work within, in that appropriateness. You can't ban things. It doesn't, if you banned a book from school or you banned this from a student, they're literally gonna go home on, get on their phones and the internet and they're gonna look it right up. Like, why did they do this? What's, what's the big hubbub about this? It's, it's impossible. When you make things, when you prohibit things, it just causes people usually to go towards them more.
Question for me. Superintendent, Board of Education trustee relationships are very important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
Open dialogue, sir. I'm a big fan of that at all times. If there's anything I can ever do to help out, no matter how this plays out, I'm always available. Anything I can do to help. And I believe that, and working the places I've worked, you know, seeing the president come out of the Situation Room, seeing the vice president, you know, in foreign countries, I've learned that it's, it's, there's a lot of communication that occurs and there just seems even the smallest communication, like, sir, can I get you this or can I do this? It seems to help out a lot. So that there's not like, all of a sudden, there's this giant iceberg that comes crashing through, that, that, there's been dialogue up to that point that allows the ease and there's, there's that sense of camaraderie or friendliness, there's a mutual goal, so that way when things are problematic, you have something to base it on. That way you can work towards a goal.
And I, I don't know if you, I'm sorry, I introduced Julian. Dr. Latch is our superintendent, so since you're newer to the school district, I didn't know if you knew that, so I just would, would point that out. That's the end of our questions that we had for you. You have time, so if you'd like to mention anything else to us, anything we haven't touched on alr, already, or if you'd like to elaborate, the floor is yours.
I, I don't know if anybody has any more questions. I mean, I don't know if that's allowed protocol-wise. I just, like I said, I'm always available. My children are the reason I left my previous job for, for the current job, so I could come back to Michigan, so I could be more active in their lives. So I want to be active as much as I can in their lives and going forward. I'm like, we're never, I tell my wife, we're never moving again. Like, they're gonna either put me in an old folks home from Selen, from this house, or like, or this is gonna be my, it's my last house. I, I don't want to move again. This is, this is, this was home before we left here and now it's home. So I, any, like I said, I, I know I'm not a typical candidate, but I'm, I'm doing this for kids and I, I want to lean that way, especially as I get elderly in life. I don't want to say I'm getting old, but I, I feel it now more than I used to, so I, I would like to like, start being more active in my children's lives and whatever I can do to help out.
All right, thank you. And we have a Mrs. Lasecki in our school district. I don't know if Carly is related to your George, but I just thought I was.
His wife was a teacher, too.
She's wonderful.
He was great.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you. You're welcome to stay. We're just gonna conclude the meeting or you can go. Thank you. Now is our second opportunity, please, for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting, seeing no students. Does anyone else have any public comment that they would like to do before we close the meeting? Okay. Seeing none, our next meeting will be tomorrow night. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held February eighth, 2022, here in the Liberty Boardroom at six thirty PM. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the special Board of Education meeting of February seventh, 2022, at six fifty-two PM.
So moved.
Second. Brad, thank you. Jenny, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. We are adjourned.